Okay, let's bring the city council workshop for April 2nd, 2024 to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of legions to the glad of the United States of America.
And to the glad of our league for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and just as a sprawl.
Madam clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Carter.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Swatman.
Present.
Councilmember Baldwin. Councilmember Fullerton.
Here.
Councilmember Hubler.
Here.
Councilmember McClyman.
Present.
And Councilmember Roach.
Here.
We have a motion to excuse Councilmember Baldwin.
Motion to excuse.
Second.
Very well, all in favor of excusing Councilmember Baldwin? Say aye.
Aye.
Does oppose? Very good, passes. Uh, we have two proclamations. I'll start with the first. Whereas parks, playgrounds, nature trails, open spaces, community and cultural centers, and historic sites make a community attractive and desirable place to live, work, play, and visit, and contribute to our ongoing economic vitality. And whereas parks are a place where people can reflect, exercise, play, socialize, and have fun. And whereas public parks and open spaces help build a sense of community and places where everyone is welcome. And whereas numerous jurisdictions, cities, and organizations, including Bonnie Lake, have joined together to create an event that encourages citizens to celebrate the value and enhanced quality of life that parks bring to our communities. And whereas many businesses, benefactors, organizations, and donors have provided sponsorships and donations to support this event that will bring citizens together to support their local parks. And whereas thousands of citizens throughout Pierce County will volunteer their time to clean up and beautify parks and open spaces on Saturday, April 20th, 2024. Now therefore, I Terry Carter, Mayor of the City of Bonnie Lake, Pierce County, Washington proclaim April 20th, 2024 as Parks Appreciation Day. And encourage all citizens to celebrate by participating in this event and assisting to clean up and beautify Bonnie Lake's parks, trails, and open spaces. I have another one. Uh, whereas Arbor Day is a day to celebrate trees and promote well-being. And whereas Saturday, April 26th has been set aside as the official Arbor Day in the City of Bonnie Lake. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for homes, and beauty to our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and renewal. Now therefore, I Terry Carter, Mayor of the City of Bonnie Lake, Washington, do hereby proclaim April 26th, 2024 as Arbor Day in the City of Bonnie Lake. And urge all citizens and property owners to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. All right, uh, next we have a presentation on Veterans Memorial Drive and Angeline Road Roundabout. I'll hand the floor over to interim Public Services Director Jason Sullivan.
I don't think so.
Did on? Yep. I'm gonna be very, very brief and just do the introduction. So this is a, um, presentation on both the grant we received and also the results of a intersection analysis we did, um, related to the Veterans Memorial Drive in Angeline Road Intersection. Um, we do have Ken Gill here, who's our city engineer, who will be helping to do part of the presentation. Also Ryan Shea and Matt. Matt, I'm not going to try to mess up your last name, both with, um, um, SCJ, who did both the intersection analysis and the design work, um, to look at the ways to improve this intersection for both safety and, um, uh, access control. With that, I will turn it over to the, the members from SCJ.
Thanks, Jason. So my name is Ryan Shea and, uh, Matt Wyrock is with me here from SCJ. Um, and like, as Jason said, we worked with the city to provide an analysis of this intersection and then also supported some, um, funding opportunities. And which we'll speak to later on in this presentation. So just for some quick context, as I'm sure most of you are aware, all of you are aware, the intersection we're talking about Veterans Memorial and Angeline is shown there in the yellow circle, or the white circle, sorry. And as, um, of particular note, and this is a slide that we used when we were pursuing the funding. It's, it's located between two of the main regions, you know, town centers that the city has identified in it. This little stretch of road almost represents a bit of a gap in like the multimodal system. So part of the project was to try to address that gap in sidewalk path connectivity. Um, and then it's a little bit of the existing conditions. So level of service is kind of a main metric that's used to determine the operational health of an intersection. And that is determined by the number of seconds that a vehicle is, uh, required to wait before being able to pass through an intersection. It's an A through F scale. And as you can see, just looking at the existing volumes today, in the AM peak hour, things are reasonably fine, but in the PM, it is considered a failing intersection today. So, you know, we, we project out future analysis to find out what a long-term answer is, but when we, when we have an existing deficiency, as we did here, it certainly helps be competitive for funding and it kind of elevates the priority. So knowing, you know, determining that the existing condition is deficient, we, we established two primary intersection alternatives for consideration. Uh, single lane roundabout and the traffic signal control. These are some initial concepts that were developed that aided in the cost estimation work that we did. Just to note that in both, in neither of these exhibits show the, the planned 12-foot path that connects the Fennel Creek Trail to Locust Avenue, but they, it was included in future versions and we just didn't make concept graphics to show it. But this illustrates the intersection control options that were evaluated for safety and operations. And I'll just point out real quick while we're here that the, the roundabout is a straightforward, single lane for all approaches. We, we looked at several iterations of what traffic signal control would mean and ultimately determined that a right turn lane and a left turn lane on Veterans Memorial would be necessary to accommodate the future volumes. And so here is a look at the operational results for the existing case and then also for each of those alternatives. Both traffic signal and roundabout control, um, as you can see in the table, would, would operate reasonably well. The signal in the PM would operate at a level of service C with approximately 24 seconds of average seconds delay for each car. And the roundabout though, would, would, is projected to operate better at, with, you know, less than 10 seconds of delay. And we also show on there the projected vehicle queue, the worst vehicle queue expected for each control option. You can see in the, in the, the projected 2049 with no change, it's a substantial problem with 1,800 feet plus of queue. Um, those queues get much better with control, but it's similar to the delay, the roundabout is expected to produce fewer shorter queues than the traffic signal. And we also kind of took a look at the safety implications at the intersection. Overall, roundabouts are generally, I mean, considered much safer, you know, for pedestrians and for vehicles. You, um, on the right, we show a couple exhibits. A, a big part of why roundabouts tend to be safer is that they reduce the number of conflict points at an intersection. And specifically, they, they eliminate those crossing conflict points where you see the high-speed collisions of two moving vehicles in, in opposite directions. So in a roundabout, everybody's reduced down to a slower speed and there's fewer points where those cars interact. And so when you, in the, the 88% reduction in injury crashes, it's, it's that high mostly because of the reduced travel speeds of the vehicles that, that enter the roundabout. Um, there's generally a lower crash frequency overall, but it's especially notable when it comes to injury crashes. And then I'll give it to Matt to talk a little about the cost estimations.
When we're, uh, taking a look at, um, construction costs and then the design cost through both options, these numbers also reflect the, um, the pathway that wasn't shown in the previous, uh, couple of slides. But one of the bigger differences here is the right-of-way need, I guess, bigger difference, um, in, uh, not total cost, but just of right-of-ways that the, in the signal option, um, it impacts right-of-way on both sides of the road due to the width of adding those lanes. And then the, uh, the roundabout, um, we're not widening as far where, where the right-of-way is impacted. And then the curvature of the roundabout kind of helps us stay away from hopefully impacting the right-of-way or the private property too much. This is the exhibit that shows the path that would go for the, for the length of the project. And this path is also, um, cost-wise included in the signal option from the previous slide. Turn it over to Ken.
Okay. So we keep going doing on the slides. You're doing a great job.
Oh, sure.
So two letters of support in front of you. Uh, one is from the property to the north that we would need to acquire property for the roundabout. Um, and then the other, uh, letter of support is from Pierce County. If you look at the tail of that roundabout, it's actually in Pierce County. So, uh, we obtained those from those as part of our grant application that we did. Next slide.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Does the, uh, does that right-of-way include that 12-foot? And what?
Yes. Yeah, look, can we go back to that slide and then let's, let's talk about that right away a little bit, net? To clarify. So Councilmember McClemens, the question I heard was, where's the right-of-way take? Uh, it's right where that, uh, the, you're widening it to come into that lane, to come into the roundabout. The, the 12-foot trail that connects existing Fennel Creek Trail all the way up to Locust is in an existing right-of-way. Does that answer that question?
It does.
Okay. Could you skip ahead and get Matt?
Thank you.
And the 12-foot trail is ADA compliant, so it allows for bike traffic as well as walking traffic and is wide enough for the, for wheelchairs and whatnot, right?
Correct. It's a, it's an extension of your existing Fennel Creek tail that stops down in Copperfield Estates and goes all the way up. So it just connects up in terms of slope and width and things like that. So, yeah. Um, so moving ahead to, uh, uh, the funding application, Pierce County, our City of Bonnie Lake, along with some others of us, uh, Ording, Eatonville are allowed to, uh, chase this pot of money called the rural town centers in the title. And, uh, after four rounds of, uh, presentations, it's used a lot of these slides and a lot of the staff. Um, and, uh, Jason's helped fill in on the, the planning questions, which I'm no good at. Um, we were awarded, uh, the, the amount of money we needed to do the design funds and the amount of money that we would need projected for right-of-way. So with this funding comes a couple strings, um, you've got to obligate it or fill out the paperwork with Wash Dot to say you're going to use it by the dates up there. So we got a little bit of time, but it's coming soon. Um, the other, uh, string is that these funds are federal funds. So, uh, when you're using federal funds, um, Councilmember Fullerton's, you're, you're, you're upgrading everything to ADA compliance. So it's, it's a condition of the funds. Uh, the other thing, the string with the funds is if you don't use them, you gotta pay them back. Okay, so for the design funds, you don't have to. That's kind of a new rule that we verified as Washington. However, for the right-of-way funds on June 1st, 2035, you've got to have that right-of-way purchased and reimbursed, or you're writing a check for that right-of-way amount back to our funding partner.
Um, June 1st, 2026.
June 1st, 2036. You've got 10 years to do it. 10 years. So. And that's just for the, for the right-of-way only. Yeah. Uh, can we go on to the next slide, please? Okay, so the only thing to look at at this slide, it's, I almost didn't put it up there. It's so busy. The Yellow's Bonnie Lake, and that's how we scored on this project among King, Pierce, and Kitsap Counties. And St. Homish, thank you, Jason. So, uh, we were the top project in Pierce County. Um, and, uh, got ironically got beat out by a really good roundabout that's going on in Sultan and Paulsbow. So, uh, next slide, please. Again, another really busy slide. The only thing to take away from this is where we scored our points. Lot of points in safety, lot of points in traffic calming, and those are the criteria on the left there. So if you want to look more in that. Keep on going. Next slide, please. So, uh, the next steps is, uh, how do we pay for it? And, uh, the head nods that I'm looking for tonight is, yes, this is a project. It's in our six-year tip. We want to move forward with the design and use these funds. The other head knob that I'm looking for is staff, go get the money to fund the construction. And we've identified, uh, these four pots of money where this project mirrors up with the criteria in the grants. And that, that's key, keys, because you can apply for grants all over the place, um, but you, you're just like fishing for, in a storm pond, you know, you don't, you don't want that fish, right? So, uh, the Wash Dot Pike Bed Ped pedestrian bike program, um, there's the due date up there, but that's the funding that, uh, paid for the existing Fennel Creek Trail. So we were going to chase the funds for the, the extension of it through that pot of money. Um, the Transportation Improvement Board, uh, those are, those are state funds that Bonnie Lake has not dipped into since 2014. And we've, uh, we've spent a, a time with their staff. We meet regularly. They, what, is this a good project? And we get head nods from them. Yes, this would be a good. Um, the other pot of funding that's, uh, going to be coming up, this could be coming, uh, in front of you is that, uh, with through Jason's efforts, we got a grant to build a local road safety plan where you're looking at all your crash data citywide and you're pulling from that crash data projects that will be funded with that pot of money. I'm not going to make, Matt, go back a slight, a couple of slides. I'm not going to make you do it, but if you, you did, you'd see that this had eight injury crashes during the five-year period that we looked at. That's significant because that means you're sending people to the hospital. That's, that's, uh, the only thing worse is a fatality. Um, so, uh, the other, uh, last, uh, pot of money that we talked about is that, uh, this, uh, project scored well, as you saw in the previous slides, with the round of funding that we got for design. It would also score well for the construction. So just a quick summary tonight, um, looking for head nods to, uh, obligator, use the design money and then also head nods, go chase these fundings and fund the, come back to us with, uh, the same letters you got from RTCC to fund the construction. Um,
Councilmember Roach has a question.
Question. So these four that you've identified, do they talk to each other or can we potentially get funding from all four of them? And then say, we actually have too much money. I mean, how, how does that work? Do they?
Um, I never want to count my, my eggs. I propose that we go after all four of them. Um, just so that, uh, you, one, you never have to pay back the right-of-way money. Um, but also, um, you, one of them may not come through. You know, uh, I, don't ask me to guess, you know, what goes through funding grant managers' minds as they're reviewing applications, you know? Wash Dot Pike Beds might say, hey, we just funded the Fennel Creek Trail, you know, we funded the whole section. Why do you got to fund more? You know, so, um, but a, as staff, um, and maybe I'm greedy this way, but when there's funding available that out there that's matches up with your project, you'd be remiss not to go for it. Um, and the way that, uh, the, uh, the project happens, which is my experience with TIB, is that your first year is just kind of like strike one. Right? You may not get it the first year, but you'll get comments back from them on how to make your application stronger the next round. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. And then another question too, the, so as we're getting the design money and the ROA or, or, or OW money, does that place us to where they would, uh, like Sultan was getting the construction money, that places to where we could come back for the construction? They generally fund all along, or is it?
Correct, correct. So as you move forward with design, your application gets stronger because you know then exactly how much right-of-ways you need or exactly how much your costs are going to be. Um, and you, 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 you can really, uh, really hone in on what your needs to be.
Last one. Thought on the first slide, there was the contingency, which is up to 30%.
Yes.
So did we get grant money for contingency money or is that, just you can't really say what exactly it's going to be?
Yeah.
We have to go up with that, or is that something we can get funding?
The, the large contingency, the question was, is there, is there a contingency built into the grant money? Um, there is, we'd have to go back and look, um, but the, uh, the, the, the contingency is on the whole project right now.
And, and the, and the reason that we use a 30% to this level is we're trying to get order of magnitude for budget estimation of how much we should be chasing grant funds for. And so we typically use that 30% because we haven't done the design work. We really don't know what's coming up. So as we move through that, that contingency will decrease because we'll have find more refined numbers around the actual right-of-way need, the actual right-of-way cost, the actual amount of asphalt, you know, as we move from kind of schematic design into engineering design. And also on the funding side, uh, a lot of the reasons you want to chase multiple grants is granting agencies love to be the partner with somebody else. And so the more you start stacking different grants and stacking different partners, you actually get points for having multiple funding partners. So the, that's why we, we kind of decided to split this out and chase multiple grants so that we can say, oh, you're partnering with Washington Bike Pad, you're partnering with PSRC, you're partnering with, um, Wash Dot or the TIB Board. It helps to just build a better application and, and show that this is kind of a a higher scoring project. It just helps with those application scoring. So.
I love questions like this. You can ask, ask questions all you want. Um, is there anything else that I didn't cover, uh, that, uh, there's a lingering question in your mind or anything else? I, I love talking about stuff like this. So. Yes.
Um, just kind of thinking about between the two, um, the roundabout, the driver and the stoplights. I know in Planning Commission, we dove into this and asked tons of questions and I just kind of make sure like to know as we talked about this, it was really important to know that we take less right-of-way by doing the roundabout because we own so much of the land already and it would just be that little tiny spot that we would actually need to purchase, um, from Corliss and Kelly Farm. And if Kelly Farm and Corliss is already game for it, it would be even more beneficial for us. I don't know how I feel about roundabouts all the way or all the time, but in the design review, when they were presenting it to us was like, it would be feasible for big trucks to go through. There's a way for it to, them to drive over it without breaking any of the middle pieces. And it was like very, it's very well thought out, like when they presented it. So we asked a ton of questions and we're like, okay, actually roundabout would work, I think, in that concept, and it would cut down on the amount of people trying to get out of that intersection, which is insane.
It's our requirements.
So on your grading, it was interesting that the, the queue lengths between the D and the A were inverted. But the D was because of the dwell time?
Correct. The D is based on the seconds of delay that other vehicles are, are experiencing. And the worst queue usually correlates with that to a degree, but in certain circumstances, there can be a little disconnect between the, the seconds on average and that worst queue, which is why we like to look at both metrics because sometimes something shows up in one that doesn't show up in the other. So when you have both together, it tells a more complete story of kind of what's expected. But I think the big thing to take from that is that the, the delay is an average of the hour and the queue is basically like, what's the worst queue within that hour? So it's like, what's going to be in that worst five minutes versus what's the average experience? So that's sometimes why you see a different, a different look of, looking number between those.
And how did you measure that?
So we have, there's a software we use that runs a, a, a simulation where it loads the traffic and it has them stack up. And so it's a, it's a simulation measurement of what that queue length was when it ran the traffic through the different control options over the one hour. And so it observes the different queue lengths and reports back like what those worst queues were. Um, the, the, the seconds of delay is a more traditional, uh, ITE calculation of delay through equations. But the simulation allows us to see like an actual estimate of what those vehicle queues would look like.
How do you develop, how do you validate the data you put into them all?
So for, for something like this, where we're looking at control types that don't exist there today, it's largely just taking for granted that this, these softwares are largely based on real results and, and kind of validated on their own. But I have done, and multiple projects I have gone through where I'm looking at control types that exist. You can go out in the field and you can actually have people, you know, observe backup queues and then you can correlate that to what the software is estimating. And, and in most cases I've found they are very in alignment. Um, but there are exceptions to that.
But we didn't do that here.
Well, we did not. And it would be difficult for us to validate a roundabout or signal control here because they don't exist. We can't go out in the field and measure that. We could have potentially done that for the existing stop control, which we didn't do. But ultimately with the delay of the stop control performance and the nature of the different controls, I don't know how much value there would have been in validating the stop control queue when we're trying to evaluate the different controls as well, which operate very differently, the stop signs.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. Did you have some?
Thank you. Um, the, um, Planning Commission, I think, reviewed this already, right? They did, uh, I watched that. It was a great discussion. So they already recommended this option. Is that?
Yeah. So we, we, um, the Planning Commission held a public meeting, um, back in
December, I think.
December. Um, and we actually provided notice to everybody that lives within 600 feet of the roundabout, to have them come in and talk. Um, there was one guy who didn't live near the roundabout, who was mad about roundabouts in general. Um, but most of the people who lived around there, um, there was actually one gentleman who actually lived in that area, was, was in support of, of the project. And in the Planning Commission, following that public meeting, uh, and all the testimony and presentation, uh, recommended unanimously that at this location, the city moved forward with the roundabout, uh, for all the reasons we discussed here. Um, we did do current traffic data counting. I think we did it both in the summer and winter at this location. So we could get kind of that summer peak and then what happens at the winter. We also did, uh, classification counts so we could see how, how much different type of truck, traffic and traffic was flowing through this. So, um, I have to take my hats off to SCJ. We did, I kind of put them through their, their, the hoops to make sure that we had a well-thought-out, well-dated um, analysis of who got too closer to the recommendation.
Yeah. Yeah, it worked out. If anybody reviews that, it's a great discussion at the planning agency level. So they did a great job with the public and everything there. And again, pointing out that there's the right-of-way acquisition that would have to be acquired as extraordinarily small and the property owner already agrees with it. So it's kind of a non-issue of any kind of a takings type of issue there, right? Check. Um, I think there's also recommended possibly in the future on that same roadway, more easterly towards Buckley, possible roundabouts in the, but those are Pierce County kind of things. Is Pierce County still kind of leaning that way?
Yeah, there's a, at 192nd and Sumner Buckley Highway. The county is looking at installing a roundabout at that location as well, uh, to provide access for, uh, Kelly Farms.
Yeah. So it definitely aligns up with what the future looks like in my mind. Um, you know, it'll, seems to be a great project. I just, you know, note to staff, to getting all those things together to actually be able to achieve those grants is fantastic, right? Um, because that, that is really where you, you know, the public sees a lot of value. Because we don't often in the City of Bonnie Lake achieve those kind of results in rating agencies. So, you know, hats off to the folks that made us rate that high to get that kind of money available. So that was a great work there.
It was definitely team effort and I've got to give, take the hat off and actually publicly thank Ken. He, this was one of the first projects we dumped on his lap when he joined the city. Uh, and he jumped in with both feet. Um, I think you'd been here, what, two weeks before we sent you to, to do the presentation? So, um, I have to give my hat, the big kudos to Ken, um, and working with SCJ to get all this pulled together. Um, they did amazing job and, and did really, because they had to go do presentations in person to help with the scoring. So a lot of good work over here being done.
Nice.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more. This is a great project. Um, just to get sidewalk in is actually pretty amazing. Yeah. Doing the, uh, that particular intersection has been a problem. First, and will only get worse. Um, and yeah, this is a great way to solve. So yeah, thank you all for your work on that.
It also helps us get closer to getting, you know, from one end of the city to the other end of the city all the way through with sidewalks. So it just getting up. all the way through with sidewalks. So it just getting up to stupid road that I always forget to name.
Locust Avenue?
Locust. And then getting to Allen York, you know, that also I know Jason had talked about one time. It's like, oh, maybe we use that Wada dot transfer, you know, piece of land as, you know, coming up the hillside and to make that trail. But this solves a lot more issues.
So and I think for us, the next step is we'll be bringing a resolution forward because I think the council has to take official vote to do the obligation. Is that correct, Ken?
Yes, yes, yes.
So sometime between now and June, you will see something on a city council meeting that is a resolution, basically authorizing the city manager, the city, the mayor or the city administrator to sign the grant and agreement and obligate those funds for both design and right away acquisition. And then we would kickoff design this year to begin the full design package for that intersection.
Any further discussion on that? You guys good? You get, do you get the head nods that you needed? Every feels good?
Yes, that's good. Thank you so much. Thanks for listening.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on to council open discussion. A discussion, Councilmember Fullerton.
Get that paper that we were going to write. But so Jason Sullivan and I had a discussion as we had to cancel the the tour for the waste treatment plant. So we're talking about cancelling the CDC for May twenty first and then rescheduling that tour for the water treatment plant in Sumner that day. And then that would be a workshop. So after we get done with our tour at the treatment plant, we would come back up and then we could discuss any of the the changes that the wastewater treatment plant is asking for at 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 the workshop that night. So that's the plan is to cancel. See, it's going to be May twenty first. So that gives you time. It's a Tuesday. So rather than having CDC that particular day, we would schedule, what did we decide it was going to be for? So probably meet at three forty five here to catch the van to go down to the treatment plant in Sumner.
I'll bring up a couple of weeks ago, I attended the with Councilmember McLeimans. We attended the robotics deal at the Bonnie Lake High School. I haven't had a chance to talk about it yet, but it was an amazing event. The the kids were absolutely fantastic. It was, it was amazingly attended from schools all over the state. And they had a great deal in the gym with their their competition or whatnot. And they do a great job of helping each other as well. So I mean, the kids will give you whatever you need. If your robot breaks down, they've got the stuff and they're they're there. But it was a really, really cool event. And if you ever get the chance to go in the future, I highly recommend it. It was eye opening experience for me. It was really cool. And then on Saturday, I know Councilmember Hubler and I attended the Easter egg hunt put on by Mr. David Wells, did a great job with that, tons and tons of kids there. And they all got numerous prizes and all seemed very, very happy and excited to be there. So I just want to pass that on to you all. Deputy Mayor Swamin, do you have something? Sure. Please go ahead.
Okay, a couple of things. So upcoming issues, of course, you know, we're planning the council retreat at some point in time. And we're kind of playing with the concept of whether the council wants to have it on a weekend or whether they'll have it on a weekday or anything. I don't know what the availability, council members are thinking on that. It's a little bit easier probably to plan it on a weekday. I don't know if that means we plan it on a fifth Tuesday coming up or if we plan it on, you know, any day, a Thursday, Friday, Mondays. I don't know if everybody, something for people to think about a little bit. So, you know, send me nasty notes or something about what day you prefer. We got that thing we checked off and we can see which, you know, Sadie did a great job of laying this out. I sent a little matrix for us. No, just trying to figure out what works for everyone. And of course, the subjects that we'll want to do on that, we need to drill down into those to make it an actual retreat where we have subjects, you know, we have the budget is a big thing or biannual budget is a unique opportunity for this particular council to participate in. That's where we have our most power is the legislative branch is in the budget. So, you know, think about those items that you want for that kind of a thing. Because if we need to have a retreat to discuss things, then yay. But if we don't and we're going to waste our time, let's not, right? The course of the Parks and Rec thing is a big thing that we need to try to figure out where to land at on that because it's my understanding that there's a gigantic deficit in what's currently being spent as opposed to what the revenue looks like. So we'll have that, you know, mayor's proposal, but it'd be nice if the council could, like I've been having individual discussions with members to try to figure out, you know, and and funnel it back up through the finance committee. It's a little bit unfair for the mayor to have a proposal of, oh, I want to spend, you know, a half a million dollars and then the council to say, no way, that's not going to work because then we're going to have to do a lot of work on the budget. So it's really nice if we can figure it out as a team together kind of thing to try to figure out where we want to go with that. A lot of moving parts in there. Need to catch up with some members on that. I haven't been able to catch up with yet to try to figure out what their thoughts are on that. That's kind of a huge issue because there's a large amount of money involved in that particular program. It provides huge value. You know, Parks and Rec, I like it a lot. I think it's a core kind of service kind of thing for the community, but it doesn't mean we can't do it without, you know, our eyes open to see what the budgetary requirements are there because it affects a lot of things. Really an important one. Does anybody have like other things that are directly right now on the council retreat type of things that they're thinking about? Go ahead.
Yeah. So for me on Tuesdays, I would need to cancel two work nights because I would not be able to get up early in the morning on a Tuesday. So I would have to cancel my Monday night as well as my Tuesday night, which I actually was forced to do a couple of weeks ago for interviews and I'll be forced to do again for more interviews. So that is
We won't do it on a Tuesday.
Prosperity out of my pocket, which I don't really appreciate. So if we could, I I can work a Thursday. I can definitely do Friday. I can do Saturday, Sunday. Mondays would be easier than a Tuesday. I would prefer Thursday, Friday or Saturday, but I will work with whatever the majority needs. I'm just kind of stating my
Yeah, great. Yeah.
My position with my prosperity.
Exactly.
My lifestyle.
I don't know if the mayor has a current preference to what, you know, not, we're not going to decide tonight, but I don't know. Just to give us an idea.
I don't. I'm fairly flexible.
Whether or not you, you know, you're thinking that staff is more applicable for a day or you're really leaning towards a day or a week. And from a staffing perspective, right?
From the staffing perspective, yeah, weekday is better, but I think that's really difficult for some of the council members, specifically Councilmember Baldwin, who's not here. At certain
Because she works every day normally.
Monday through Friday. Yeah, yeah. But I don't know, can she take one, one day off? Obviously, Councilmember Fullerton's.
She seems to be the most flexible, honestly.
She may.
She has Monday, Thursdays and Fridays available.
Oh.
Um.
Yeah. Yeah.
If if we can give me like as close to a month in advance, if we make a decision for May, I'll be bidding for my May schedule by April tenth is when those close. So I would be able to bid for those days off. And then basically I would work extra shifts somewhere else during the month. So I wouldn't lose any money. So if you want to do a Monday, Tuesday or Wednesday, then I can be flexible, more flexible if we can get something set up before the tenth of April. So I can
Oh, right.
Did my schedule according.
Yay. We'll juggle the things and see what come up with on that, right?
You have, you have good thoughts with the other council members.
Right, yeah. Yeah. And I know the mayor's working, was when the deputy mayor was the mayor, right? Was working on those issues with like the community council and the community outreach piece and those are still going to come forward. They're not, they're not, they haven't been dropped or anything. They're just like working with staff on those and getting those presentations together and everything like that. What else do we have? Oh, I didn't know if, because it, can we get the, we have some council applications. Can we get those as soon as we can type of thing? Because there's no reason, I don't think that we have to hold those because we should, sooner the council gets to review those. You know, if they come in, they should just be forwarded to the council.
I see the the attorney raised her hand here. So we'll let her.
So my office's recommendation is that you wait until the the applications close until they're all sent out because people can withdraw their applications up until that date. So that's my recommendation.
Right, but then
And that closes. And I think the clerk's office does get them out pretty quickly as soon as the application period closes.
And I try to, when does the application period?
The ninth.
The ninth of April.
Eighth, the eighth. So we, you would expect to have them on the ninth.
And then having interview on Tuesdays, interviews.
Yeah, because I think I've heard a couple of council members want to like have time to review that. They don't think it's necessarily fair to have them the day before. So we'll probably, but that's, that'll be our council kind of process to come with. That's what I'm basically hearing. I don't know whether the council members are, you know, up for what they're thinking. The rest of the council, you don't want to have them the day before and then just do it the next day, right?
Well, yeah, but we can't, like, I think we've already got it on the schedule. So, I mean, yeah, it's not convenient. But I don't know if there's a possibility of kind of getting them as they come so that we can review like a first come, first serve or you know, like if 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 somebody has applied by Friday, you know, even though it doesn't close until Monday, then the people we can look at over the weekend that applied on Friday and then the people who come in on Monday, then we could look at them kind of like prioritize who came first, just so we can get through all of their questions and applications and everything. But I don't know if that's possible. I mean, it wouldn't prioritize like if we were going to appoint them. It's just like, just gives us more time to read through over the weekend versus just the night before being up until midnight.
I think it's whatever the council wants to do, right?
That's what I was going to say. I think it's the council's decision essentially as to what they want to do. They have, you know, the recommendation.
Well, I think at this point, it's like not going to work out for it's not going to work out for us to change it because the the applications are due on the eighth and then the the interviews are scheduled for the ninth. So I think we just, I guess we're just going to stick with what we have. But in the future, it would be great if we could maybe close it on a Friday and then that gives us the weekend to read through all of the applicants. Yeah. Right.
I don't necessarily have to appoint on the ninth if you wanted more times with the application and about it after the interviews.
I mean, and we can, we can change it to be like, you know, we want them all by, you know, whatever comes in by Friday. We want those on Friday or whatever. And we can say, hey, that way gives us the weekend to start. Let me, what if we get ten? What if we only get one? You know, I mean, I don't know who's applying or who's not applying. And if we can get through some of those, because even just reading through the last ones, just for the mayor spot, there's a lot to read in some of those and really doing our due diligence and knowing more in depth on their backgrounds and who they are, maybe having that opportunity to actually look into that, not be like Councilmember Fullerton said, up until midnight the night before, trying to do one because we don't have time on Tuesday to be able to get through all of those if if there's more than one or two.
When we get staff to forward those to the full council on Friday, whatever you have on Friday. That sounds like an executive decision. Make that happen. Okay. Because there could be more. It's not closed.
And until Monday, but we'll just get whatever app.
Whatever we have on Friday.
I mean, who knows? Maybe, maybe Councilmember Baldwin will actually have some wifi on the airplane if she's flying home that day and she can read through some of those applicants.
And when we go through that process, there's, you know, because we have six council members, so we could easily get to, you know, a possible, I guess, split vote, right? Does the mayor intend on in voting, voting in that process or even being involved in the legislative process? Sorry to put you on the spot, right?
I don't intend to. I I think you saw that there, the attorney's recommendation was basically that, you know, it's possible. Sometimes people don't, sometimes people do. I think if if the council really just couldn't make a decision and they came out over and over again with a tie, then do something just to break the tie, but I wouldn't intend on doing that. I would want the council to make that decision.
Sure. Appreciate it. Yeah.
Thank you.
Let's see, anything else? I don't think I have anything else yet.
Okay. Fair enough. Councilmember McLeimans.
Yeah, so the the Facilities Planning Commission for a school district is done. And the recommendation is going to be made to the school board, I believe, tomorrow night, a study session. Right? So basically for, I think it's a seven hundred and fifty million dollar bond, which I don't quite understand how that works. I thought the bonding limit was five hundred, but I guess the, I guess they're going to try to figure that out. And so anyway, so that's tomorrow night. And it that'll provide a high school in Sumner, the completion of that. And then Tahale Middle School, which is a big deal, some improvements at Bonnie Lake High School and other improvements. So very interesting.
Yeah, I I sat in for that one meeting for you and it was in very interesting, right? Because they'd had a bunch of meetings prior and I kind of came in on the last one and and was learning a lot. It seemed to that they were having difficulty deciding what to bond, where to bond, that kind of stuff, specifically because there's like three main sections of the Sumner Bonnie Lake School District. So you have like Sumner down the valley, the Bonnie Lake up on the hill, Tahale. And if you don't give them all something, then one's going to vote no, and you're not going to get anything. So they were really kind of running into that over and over again until they came up with the idea of the super bond, essentially, which is this gigantic, you know, millions and millions of dollars to do something everywhere. With the idea that, hey, you would do and have to come back for probably fifteen years or something like they were just done, we're just going to move on type of deal. It was kind of based on what East Pierce did. They kind of did their super bond or they're they're doing the headquarters station, the Milton Station, Tahale, they're kind of doing, they were like taps, they're doing all these different ones all at the same time. They did kind of same thing. Just a giant bond and get it all out of the way. If voters will go for it, right? That's the big question. So they want to do a big education campaign or whatnot. But yeah, that that was the the interesting thing of the night to learn, you know, they wanted to move forward with that and my understanding of why.
Right. Yeah, that was very contentious about. Yeah. How do you give all the different pieces? Something reasonable, right, for paying the extra tax burden?
Yeah.
Right? And so it's it's not just the needs of the students. It's like, how do you get taxpayers to foot the bill? It was interesting.
Yeah.
Discussion, right? One of those things in, is that is that inclusive of the pool or not? Because I know we're
The pool would go back down and stay in Sumner. They would redo the pool down there.
Because we had a discussion point about a possible property availability up here for a pool at one point. And now it's my understanding that Sumner has that programmed for down in That is correct. That is part of the plan that they approved. We don't need to worry about property for a pool in up here yet again.
We want a public.
We're on our own. If you want to pull.
There are a lot to maintain.
Yeah.
Yes, they are.
Any other discussion? All right, we'll go to a review of council minutes. Councilmember Fullerton.
Yeah, I did not see any changes.
Great job.
Just review them and. I can.
All right. Uh, we'll now go on to our discussion item for the night. Madam Clerk.
This is AB 2421, resolution R 2421. A resolution of the city council of the city of Bonnie Lake, Pierce County, Washington, authorizing the transfer of funds from the general fund to the water fund to purchase the property for parks purposes and amending resolution 2734, declaring the Reed property surplus to the city's needs. That is for a discussion only tonight.
Sullivan.
Yeah, we're, we're not expecting any action tonight, but wanted to bring this forward for discussion. So just away in a brief way of background, uh, in September of this year, the city council authorized the mayor to sign a memorandum of understanding, uh, with MRAK to regarding the potential for a private public partnership for the use of the Reed property for the development of multi-sports fields and other athletic facilities. Specifically, item 2.1A of section four of the MOU. MOU means memorandum of understanding, uh, provides that the city agreed to take steps necessary to transfer the property from the water utility ownership to the general fund ownership, including appropriating the funds, include appropriating funds for the transfer of ownership. The provision also, uh, provide that the city would agree to determine the fair market value of the property. The fair market of the property was determined by appraisal conducted in August of 2023 uh, and is based on what the water fund would receive if the property was sold. Uh, transferring the property from the water fund to the general fund is the same as if the property were sold on the open market to a private or public, other public agency. Uh, as it's the exchange of ownership between two party and two properties, two property interest. Uh, the fair market value is required to be utilized so that the water fund recoups the STCs that were expended to purchase the property. So when we purchased the property in 2010, we used, uh, system development charges, that's what SDC stands for, in order to acquire that fund for a water purpose. Uh, the water utility collected those SD, uh, SDC funds for water infrastructure projects. And now that the property is no longer proposed to be used for water purposes, those funds must be paid back to the water, to back, paid back to the water utility in order to complete other water related projects. Um, as I said, we're not asking for action tonight. Uh, the council has three options at this time. Uh, they can tell us to do nothing and just let it hang out in the ether. Uh, they can move forward with putting this on a future agenda, which we would do. And the third option is to provide direction to staff to bring this back only when the lease comes forward with MRAK. Um, you will note that the actual value on the resolution is blank and that's because this is still a pending real estate transaction that could go out to the public. So those values stay, uh, off of the public documents. Uh, we did discuss the appraised value with the city council at the February 27th, 2024, uh, executive session and provided what that fair market appraisal was. Uh, with that, we can answer any questions, um, or providing assistance to the council.
I'm wondering if everybody knows what that number is or remember what that number is, right? There seems to be a lot of, uh, like, what the heck is that number? Because if we're talking about, in my mind, as the way I understand it, is taking millions of dollars possibly or $5 out of the general fund, those are very dis, different discussions, right? I don't, I don't know what that is. Um, and giving it to the water fund, basically. So, um, I kind of have significant questions on why in the world we can't use the water property in the same way instead of having to transfer the money from the, from the water fund because somebody wants to say that the park is the value to the general instead of the water fund or something. But I don't know, you'd think you'd be able to figure out a way to do this without having to take question, question mark out of the general fund into the water fund? Is that, because it's, I don't know where everybody's like at on, it's just like, oh, I don't care. I'm gonna take $4 million out of the general fund and I'm gonna stick it in the water fund.
I, um, I believe that part of the answer to that was in order to have a lease with MRAC would be that that property has to be owned by the city.
Yeah, but who says it? The property is owned by the city, right?
Yeah.
It is currently owned by the city. It's owned by the water.
The water department.
That's fine.
Mr. Sullivan, do you have something to?
Yeah, so there's, there, there's a, there's a couple of reasons why. One is, um, for, one of the, one of the things that we wanted, that the council wanted was for this project to be listed in the parks plan as a parks property. In order for it to be a parks property, it has to be in the general fund and not the water utility because the water utility is not in the business of building parks. The second issue is that the council wants to be able to consider the public benefit that the facility provides in order to provide a lower lease to M, MRAK. Uh, in order to do that, it has to be considered park property because they're providing park space, providing recreational space is not a benefit to the water utility. And the third is the sale of that property was built into the rate analysis that the council approved. So if the property isn't sold, then there, in the future, the rate analysis could be impacted because there would be missing revenue that was not realized.
I don't know about that. I didn't see that one in there. I'm sure you did. I'm sure I'll be looking for it.
I double checked and verified this week, Councilmember Swatman, Deputy Mayor Swatman.
Well, then there would be a publicly available number in that rate analysis.
There wasn't, I believe there was a number in there. I don't believe it was the same as what was based on the appraisal.
Hmm, interesting.
Was it based on the original sale value when it was bought?
I am not 100% sure. What exactly?
Look into it. Sorry, Sheri here. I can look into it. I don't recall what, what we, um, represented to FCS. I'd have to look.
But the rates analysis was completed prior to the appraisal being completed in August of last year. So it wouldn't have had the appraised value in it from that time.
So I guess my thought would be it's, uh, we signed an MOU in good faith that we knowing that this was going to happen. Um, and so, you know, this is just essentially bringing it forward, uh, for the discussion of it. But I would hope that it, uh, continues on that, that good faith effort to, uh, continue what we, what we're starting. I feel like it was kind of shaky, uh, to begin with, and I think this is the time to really, you know, put our foot down and say, yeah, we're, we're ready to move forward. Your hand up, sorry.
Next question on the, the email that was sent out, just as far as the gifting of public funds and everything. We know if we, if we did this, so it went, so now it's in the city owns it. What is the threshold? Do we know what that is to make sure that we're not gonna run afoul of state law?
Yeah, I'd like to talk about, that's something that I could talk to you about, the legal risk in executive session. I don't really want to discuss legal risk out in open session. So that's why I sent you a privileged communication. But I'd be happy to talk with you about it. That, and that's a decision, that would be a discussion for the, the lease itself. Right now, we're just talking about the acquisition from one fund to the other.
Councilmember McLemmons.
So I'm a little confused. There is a specific RCW that prevents us from holding the property in the water fund?
It, it, it all just depends on how you want to move forward with the property. If we want to take it out of the parks plan and we want to charge MRAK a full market lease, then it can stay in the water fund. So the water fund is being paid for leasing their land at full market rate. If the council doesn't want to lease it at full market rate to MRAK but have a reduced rate because there's a public benefit for it being a park, then it needs to be in the general fund as park property. And the direction that we were given in the MOU was they're, they're looking at doing a lower, the council wants a lower lease rate to account for the public value that it would provide. So it has to move out of the water utility into the general fund. The water utility could straight lease the property to MRAK, but MRAK would have to pay the full, there would be no accounting for what public benefit it provides. It would be the lease value of that property is X, MRAK has to pay X.
And just, because, because I was gonna add on to that, and one of the reasons for that is that the property was acquired with water fund money. So rate payers, um, water rate payers paid into that fund and that's the fund that was used to acquire it as water property. So you can't convert it from water property to park property without actually buying it from the water fund. Because that's an enterprise fund, um, it's accountable to the rate payers.
Yeah, and that, that's true, right? But please don't forget that a mass majority of our water fund is paid for by non-citizens.
By water rate payers, yeah, whether, regardless of where they live. If they're in a water district, that's where it comes from.
So, yeah, the citizens of the Bonnie Lake are contributing to, you know, the water fund. It's benefiting far outside of the citizens of Bonnie Lake, neither here nor there. Hopefully we'll make it a small number. Hopefully that number will be, uh, the number, because we have listed here, we have a assessed valuation of 660,000 plus whatever it is, 376,000. Uh, that was assessed value on our exhibit, uh, public document before us tonight.
Yeah, that was, that was the assessed value.
Way back.
Uh, back in 2019. So.
So hopefully we use a million dollar number and we call it good and we do something that stupid and we'll be good if we're doing anything more stupid than that.
Councilmember Hubler.
I'm personally just going back through the MOU. The purpose of, of putting all this together was to make it a benefit for the public and to have MRAC pull it into the parks plan. That's also how they can get some of the grants that they're applying for is it has to be in our park plan. Right now, it's designated to be in our park plan. So me personally, I think we should move it forward to council so that we can discuss it further. You know, figure out what we feel should be the price, how, you know, all that kind of stuff. I know we can't probably talk about the price out in open, but we have talked about it in executive session, but at least we can talk about it more.
Oh, I, I'm confused how we can have a public number and a different number.
So the, the public number that councilmember Swatman was referring to is the assessed value that it's assigned to the property based on its tax assessment, just like you can go into Pierce County and look at Pierce County and what the tax assessor says the value is worth. You can do that for your home. You can do that for any piece of property in Pierce County. So the public number is what the Pierce County says the tax, what the assessed value would be if the city would pay tax on that property like everybody else. So if you look at it right now, when you go to tax assessor's website, it says the assessed value is X, the taxable value is Y. Taxable value is zero because we're a governmental agency. That's where this public number is coming from. And I, and I want to say it's around 1.2 currently on the tax assessor role. The appraised value is what a real estate appraisal who goes out and looks at what market rate would be for if we were to sell the property on the open market as a, as a, we would sell, as anybody would sell property. And just as you sell your home and you could sell it for a different amount than what's on the tax rolls because that's just what the appraisal is saying, the va, the value of the home is for tax purposes. So that's where you're getting a kind of a public number. And then the appraisal number, which is the exact appraisal number, is the one that is still, uh, confidential under RCW.
Question. So if we were to purchase and then for what, if things didn't work out, could you sell it back to them and just be back to square one?
Well, that's a really good question, councilmember. That was a little bit problematic because right now the water, um, the council determined under the resolution that this piece of property has no value, not no value, has no use to the water fund. So, um, that's why it's been surplus and it can be sold. People can offer to buy it and that's how, um, um, MRAC came and offered, you know, suggested that they be able to lease it on a public-private partnership. So it doesn't, uh, at this point, as far as, and we can, Jason can correct me, but it doesn't have a use for the water. So if we revoke the declaration of surplus or, you know, or we just amend that so that we sell it to ourselves, ha, ha, there'd be no justification for the water system to buy it back. So if the council's all concerned that maybe it won't all come together, you can certainly wait, um, and see where MRAC, MRAC is, wait till we have a lease. Wait, I mean, they haven't, they still haven't signed the access, um, agreement. So they haven't generated a site plan or anything like that, which is part of their obligation under the MOU. So, but the council asked us to keep moving on things, so we brought it forward. So you can certainly wait in order to, um, buy it from the water fund into the general fund until you're certain that it's, that this deal with MRAC is going to get to the finish line, um, be, because the, otherwise the only option you would have, not the only option, but selling back to the water fund would not be an option, but we could certainly surplus it from the general fund and sell it on the open market. Or you could, um, develop it yourself as a park if you have the funding to do that. But what you can't do is send it back to the water fund and get that water fund money back into the general fund.
Fullerton.
Yeah, so you've kind of answered my question, but just the fact that we can, if, if, if everything falls through with MRAC, then we can turn around and sell that property if we, because it's already in the surplus, so we could sell it to somebody else and call it good. Or maybe there's another park plan that comes along in the meantime, but.
Yeah, yeah.
We, we can get the money back, I think, fairly easily.
You'd have to surplus it again from the general fund because you, by acquiring it in the general fund and having a use for it, then you'd have to go through the surplus process. But yeah, you absolutely could do that.
And as soon as we, I think the staff was pointing out, as soon as we get the lease kind of close, it's a no-brainer to kind of flip it for whatever. It's an argument about the cost more than anything, right? Because if we have, if we know, that's the, we gotta know, you know, how serious the lease is, I guess, right? Because I hear different things about them looking at different pieces of property, so I don't know if that's inclusive of or exclusive of, right?
I think they're, yeah, they're, they're definitely looking at, at a couple of options, uh, still. I, I think it could be prudent, honestly, to wait just a little bit on this one.
But we can give them a heads up that, yeah, you know, everybody agrees this is, well.
We can bring it forward.
Most people agree that, yeah, it's a good thing.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll do it in some form.
We can bring it forward whenever you would like to, right? You can put it on the agenda and whatnot. We can.
You're the mayor too.
So, um, so we can certainly wait a little bit until things are a little more ironed out. I don't think that's necessarily a bad thing. Councilmember Fullerton.
Would it be helpful though for MRAC if they knew that we were actually moving forward with, making sure that it's being annexed into the city? So that would make it, uh, easier for them to get the lease paperwork because there, I, seems like there were some issues with them being able to get access based on the fact that we didn't technically own the property yet. And so we don't, can't really lease it to them if we don't, or have the MOUA actually be finished if we don't own the property. So I'm thinking we kind of need to start moving forward. Since it's useless to the water department anyway, then like, um, city attorney Robertson said, we can turn around. If they back out or something happens, then we'll just resurplus it in the general fund and we can sell it or lease it or do whatever we have to do. But we'll be able to recover the money regardless. So I, I just think it makes sense to consider moving forward. I know this isn't, isn't an action item for tonight, but maybe we can put it on full council at some point in the near future and start moving forward. That's my thought.
Mr. Sullivan, did you have something you wanted to say?
Well, I, I was just gonna say that, the, the, when we did our presentation, we would move forward with the annexation until the lease is signed. Uh, because you want to make sure that that lease is signed before you annex the property and pull it into the city in case something goes wrong. So, uh, just wanted to point that out, that the annexation, we do have to acquire the property before we can annex it, but we'd also recommend not doing the annexation until the lease is completed.
That makes sense.
Councilmember McLemmons.
So just so that the council members know, I, I think a public-private partnership, um, is a good thing. I support that. I also am fairly fiscally responsible, so I understand the prudent side. How will we understand that decision, that trade matrix for when? Because in my mind, what I just heard was, um, the benefit for the public-private partnership is. Cause in my mind, what I just heard was um, the benefit for the public-private partnership is and the city doesn't have to pay and carry the whole burden of building a facility. And but the community, the citizens may choose to take advantage of it. And we can make it lucrative for the MRAC. Or if MRAC builds a facility, right? The citizens of Bonnie Lake may choose to take advantage of that, but it might be a different cost, because then it's a completely, it might be a completely uh commercial, at a commercial rate. So you know, I'm trying to figure out what that trade matrix looks like now that you said that and how to make that decision. Um, otherwise, you know, I came in tonight going, okay, we need to support this. Maybe it's a good thing to make this with the idea of if things go south, we just, we need to sell the property.
I I think that's the the thing, right? It is, you're moving a pot of money from one pot to the other pot to take care of water, right? So that's taken care of. And then it sits there and we can surplus it again if we need to. That's not a problem. Um, and then when MRAC is ready to move forward, because they don't have to purchase the land, which makes it a little bit more lucrative for them to actually do the job. Also makes it lucrative for the city because they actually get a park in a reasonable amount of time and a reasonable amount of money. Um, then I I think it's a win-win. So I I would still support moving forward. I'm just bringing it up like if everybody didn't want to, I could see delaying, but I wouldn't want to delay.
Right. I have one more question, if you mind. So does the park have to be built to be ADA compliant?
Think so, yes.
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 I would say yes, and if it's, if it's part of the city's park system, then even more yes. We'd have to meet all of our standards, because it's been put in parts and parcel of our park plan. That's why I'm saying that it really depends on the council's decision how they want to move forward with MRAC. If they want to say, MRAC, you build your facility, you permit it with Pierce County, um, and you just move forward and with that project and we will lease it to you at full market rate. Whatever that lease appraisal said the lease value is, they would then just build their project, work with the county to permit it, and they would move forward. So that's kind of one option. Option two, which is all predicated on the fact that the count, the city wanted to have a very low lease with MRAC, um, is what's predating all these other decisions, because if you have the low lease, you have to show that there's a value, a value to the citizens. And I don't mean the water rate payers, I mean the general fund citizens, or or general fund taxpayers. Um, and so to mo- and the other thing was that the city wanted to control the permitting. That was what MRAC offered, asked. So there's two things that have to happen. One, it has to move to the general fund, so it's in the park plan. That also allows us to annex it and bring it into the city, that we control the permitting process. Um, but then there becomes, there becomes more requirements then, because it's part of our park plan versus just a private developer doing a project on property. So option A for the council, there's three options the council can consider. One, a straight sale to MRAC. Two, a full lease the water fund. So the water fund basically leases it at full market rate to MRAC. MRAC moves forward with their project, they work with the county on permitting. We are simply, for lack of a better word, their landlord, renting them property for an ex- for however long the ground lease would be. Option three, which is how the MOU is built, is that the general fund purchases at a fair market value from the water utility, it goes into the city's park plan. So it meets kind of our requirements for public parks. And then there's a lease signed between the city and MRAC for them to build the facilities and their lease is lower, has a lower yearly cost, because there's a ci- there's a public benefit to the park system. So those are kind of the three options. This resolution is predicated on option three, but all the other options are still under the table. Or on the table, I shouldn't say under, on the table.
Councilmember Fullerton.
Yeah, so in order for MRAC to get the the lower lease, they actually have to prove that they have um, public access. There has, they've got um trails and parks. They've been also, um, I believe they had meetings with the um tribes as well. And so this has to be an actual public benefit where the public can have access to that facility um at free or at a lower cost than if it was private. So it wouldn't be fully private if if MRAC is going to be able to lease the land from the city, make it part of the parks department. It has to benefit the people at free or at a lower rate. And they've also had to work with the um parks and spaces as well as the tribes and try to figure out how to make this a benefit to everyone, not just um MRAC. So in order for them to get that lower price, then they have to make it benefit the people. Otherwise, they have to pay the higher rate or buy it.
Yeah.
I just for note, uh, cause I think it's a great project. I really applaud the um now mayor Carter's efforts in this uh venue to get these parties talking together, to get these things moving. Um, you know, it should be noted, though, in my mind that I personally, I think they're kind of crazy for wanting to permit through the city of Bonnie Lake outside, and then they're gonna have to deal with Pierce County also. That's their choice, you know, they're kind of that private entity and kind of do that thing, but you know, don't say, I didn't tell you so, when they come back and they like are arguing with Bonnie Lake and then they're pissing off Pierce County in the same venue, because you know, that's, that's a political thing there where I don't like to uh upset Pierce County with the developments that we do, because I like to build bridges and you know, our community members and coalitions between Deholy and Pierce County, I think they're really valuable, and I think Bonnie Lake has a lot of work to do and building back a lot of those relationships between our different places that we have out there. Hopefully, you know, we'll be able to do that.
And and we've had.
Exactly.
I was gonna say, I think Pierce County is actually pretty excited about this project as well.
Sure, yeah, uh-huh, right, yeah, check. And the only reason I say that is because, you know, I'm doing a lot of work in a lot of different jurisdictions with a lot of things right now with uh, and they're all, they all talk great, but when you actually deal with the details, which rightly so, you know, there's a lot of details behind the thing, it's really difficult. And when you're layering on multiple jurisdictions, yeah. More power to them. Great, I'm happy to see them get it done. They're crazy as a box of rocks.
Any other discussion? All right.
I think we need to give them direction.
Yeah, we're, we're kind of still don't know what our direction is. We've kind of heard it, so the options, I guess, just to run it through and we can do it on head nods, I don't, it doesn't need to be a vote. Is do nothing at this time, just let it.
Yeah.
Stay.
Hey, hold on, let's get Councilmember Roach's question. Something that has to do with this, and then we'll.
Not a question, but more of a comment. So a- and I think the council as a whole is supportive of this and we want to be supportive and help. Um, but we know that right now, you know, the last meeting we had, they are looking at different places. There's everyone's trying to figure out what exactly it's gonna be. So whatever it's gonna be, I think we're gonna be supportive of it. But we don't have some of those answers. So I, I think what I would like to see is maybe, and I know that like MRAC is scheduling individual meetings with council members and things, but I think it'd be really beneficial to have you know, the mayor, maybe one of the council members or two of the council members to meet on a regular basis and really hash those things out. Cause right now I feel like, you know, I don't, I don't know if they're gonna pursue this route. Cause to be honest, when the pre- presentation I saw, I was like, if that was me, there's no way I'd try to go through all those hoops and obstacles. I'd rather look for a different way. So we need to have those meetings like in a a regular basis and figure out what way that's gonna be to where we can be supportive. Um, so just, I'm open to supporting it any way we can, but I think there needs to be more communication and helping kind of see where they're going, so we can help facilitate that too. So I don't know if we can do that, we can do that without breaking any public meetings, right? If we have just a couple of council members that want to be maybe like on an ad hoc committee or something to.
Yeah, that's fine, you can do that. Because it's not a standing committee, it was an ad hoc and non-quorum.
So we can go up for three council members?
Yeah, but it 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 has, needs to be ad hoc, um, because otherwise the Open Public Meetings Act applies if it's a standing committee, so. Certainly, um, and and there could be regular reports to the council as well.
Well, maybe set up an ad hoc committee and then and talk with them and figure out where they want to go on this. You know, do we want to do it next week? Do we want to do it in a month? Cause I don't, I don't think it really matters as long as we're
Yeah.
moving. But that's, that's kind of what I'd like to see.
Yeah, I I can talk to them about that, so.
Jason, you need direction. What is our?
I guess what I was saying was the three options that we're just looking for head nods is, and it, I think I know what it is, but I just want to make sure, which was kind of do nothing right now and just kind of let this know that it's a box that we still need to check, but what more time pass? Uh, bring it forward in a specific council meeting on a specific council date for action. Or basically say, don't do anything until we have a lease ready to go. Um, and then bring it forward the same night we bring the lease forward. So those are kind of the three big options. And we're just kind of looking for kind of general guidance, so we make sure that we're implementing the kind of the the policy direction of the city council.
I'm just, I'm just giving you my my personal opinion. That's all. I'm number two.
So number two um was water leases fully rate and then work with the county. Number three was the general fund, parks plan, and then lease to MRAC. And they build the parks. So, or I guess.
I guess what we were saying specifically with this resolution, not with the options with MRAC, so
Okay.
Option one is do nothing, just let it kind of stay in its current status. Option two is bring this resolution back for a specific council vote on a specific council date. Option three is don't do, bring anything back to the council until we have a lease and do it the same night that we do is the lease.
Okay, I say option two then also.
Well, and I was, can I say, I think there's a fourth option, which is a little bit of a hybrid of one, which is, for example, once they have a site plan submitted, bring it back for a vote or something, you know, where it could be a triggered date rather than just let it ride. Once they've signed the access agreement and have a site, or something like that, or once they've committed to the property, something like that. I think that that's more of an option for.
We follow Councilmember Roach's idea of having this little ad hoc committee, then, you know, we can uh, give some direction basically from that and hey, here's the time period, we're ready to move forward.
Yeah, that'd be great. If we get a little more of an outline from some kind of an ad hoc, you know, because it seems kind of fluid right now, and if we can get that out of some kind of an ad hoc.
And I think getting that from from that ad hoc committee and from MRAC specifically for that.
Right, yeah.
Hey, this is when we want to do this.
Oh, perfect, yeah.
Um, that might be a better.
Yeah, because if we know they're the ones that are making the big investment.
Right.
You know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Councilmember McLemus.
Can staff participate in that committee?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, he gets to pull in as many people as he wants.
Yeah, cause it, it's obvious that they need a lot of help.
Yeah.
Right? And it is very difficult right now. I agree with council. We broach, how we go, no, I'm out. Um, I'd rather just buy, buy the land, build it and say, okay, you know, what's it gonna take to make money, my money back, but. Okay, I like to maybe option five, which is special committee. Special committee brings it back in the time period of the next two weeks, right? And we try to move forward. I I think we gotta keep the pressure on the city and MRAC to get this done in a reasonable time. Yeah, otherwise it's just a, it's, it's, it's energy and a waste of time for everybody. I mean, we can cut them loose sooner than later, so they can go buy a piece of property. And then we know what to do with, you know, we can sell the wa- the property right out of the the water utility, right? But has, has the property been up for sale? Has it been listed?
Well, I know it's not, not been listed.
Okay.
Well, doesn't mean somebody can't offer us money.
Yeah.
You know, we were, that's back to that old thing.
People can certainly ask, go, oh, yeah, this is a surplus piece of property and put an offer on it if they want, but we have not listed it.
Checkbook. I got five thousand ducks right now.
Yeah.
I I guess I I can see where you guys are coming from on that. And if we do put together an ad hoc and we can push it forward, and then maybe in the two weeks at our next workshop, we could have some kind of plan that would help us. So I do like that.
I think that's, that's the head nod you need. Good to go.
Who wants to be on the ad hoc committee?
Tim Hill to a hillback.
And do committee chairs or whoever, yeah.
Uh, i- if the council members could reach out with the ma- to the mayor, so we know who to invite for the ad hoc committee and start working on getting that set up.
Sounds good. All right. Thank you. Uh, we'll now adjourn the regular council meeting and go into an executive session for twenty minutes. For RCW forty-two point three zero point one one zero, I to discuss potential litigation with legal counsel with no action to follow. Hey, adjourn.